I'd like to call this meeting of the Raton City Commission to order, please. Could we have real call, Michael?
Mayor Neil Sagata.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Chatterley.
Present.
Commissioner Chavez.
Present.
Commissioner Jacamo.
Do you all please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone coming out tonight. Our next commission meeting will be Tuesday, February 8th, 6:00 PM, here in the chambers. This time, we will take committee reports from the commissioners. We'll start with Commissioner Chatterley.
Okay, the outdoor recreation task force met January 20th via Zoom. We discussed the Bartlett Mesa land acquisition, making the tourism infrastructure funding recommendation list, which we're very excited about. I created a sample support letter and gathered contact information to share for a letter writing campaign to our legislators to support that initiative. And we all agreed to send that out to our contacts in the community. Tyler Davis shared some conceptual designs for the Tiger Stadium Sports Complex area that the school is working on. Eventually, there may be opportunities for city partnership, but right now their focus is trying to find funding for the track and stadium area. We touched base on the need to find funding for the outdoor recreation master plan, and I don't think we've heard back yet on that EDA grant that I know of.
We have not heard that, Commissioner, right.
And Immagreen is going to be sending footage she took in Santa Fe of their Atgrede railroad crossing as an idea to bring forward in Raton for recreational access between First Street and Radhouse Park. And we would also like to see signage for designated bike routes to extend along the back streets that she identified long ago when she came to our meeting, the back way to Sugar Tree that they identified. And then it could kind of be a loop with hopefully the new 72 kind of area and then around. Just an idea. And Tyler Davis volunteered to be the official unofficial chairman for the task force and to arrange and lead the meetings, which is wonderful. We don't yet have a date for our next meeting. The Colfax County Senior Citizens Board did not meet. Our next meeting will be in February. North Central New Mexico Economic Development District met January 14th. I wasn't able to attend, but I believe Mayor Pro Tim Schuster will have some information on that. And the letter appointing her as the alternate was sent, so she should be officially accepted at our next meeting, which is scheduled for Friday, April 22nd. And I do plan to attend the municipal league, municipal day along with the board of directors meeting on February 4th in Santa Fe. That's all I had, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Jacamo.
Dr. Johnson Memorial Airport Meeting, December 20th, January 18th. Fiscal year 2122, budgets to discuss the three new staff members computers. There were three new admin computers installed by the customer center structure of New Mexico. They, uh, did itself. Installation included software and set fees, which were all paid for by the William H. and Saturn D. State in, uh, with a grant of $1,072,977,163 this month. Statistically, we brought the monthly 100,000. Donation received was zero. Funds collected were $76,45 cents. Copies made were $449.65. Tomorrow, the memorial received was zero. Program held for five. Story hours held was zero. Statistically, information for the month of December 41. Donation received was, uh, donation received was zero. Funds collected were $67.55. Copies made were $449.65. Tomorrow was received $160. Program hours at the library were seven, attended by 50 persons. There was no story hour held with sufficient. Uh, there was no, no report from RS. Service, the meeting is scheduled for tomorrow night, so that's all I got.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Chavez.
Yes, sir. Uh, there was no water board meeting, uh, this month. That'll, uh, happen next month. I attended the financial advisory board meeting on, uh, January 20th and approved financial reports to be presented to the commission tonight. That's it.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tim.
All right. So, uh, larger's tax meeting was canceled. I'm not sure if it's rescheduled. I'll get looking on that. And I did attend the January 14th, um, North Central New Mexico Economic Development District Board meeting. And it was plagued with, um, technical difficulties, so it was quite spotty. And having been a, uh, actual visitor for this meeting, I was, uh, there was, uh, you know, some parts of it I was not allowed to be, participate in anyway. But they did have two special presenters, and one was A.J. Forte. Is it Forty?
Forty.
And, um, the other was Brian Moore from New Mexico Counties. A.J. from New Mexico Municipal League presented the, um, priorities and the ones that I was able to catch throughout technical glitches. Law enforcement, protection, um, House Bill 6, local distribution to go to general funds. Technical fix on, uh, number one stay. Oh, that must have cut out because that's a partial sentence, sorry. Fix number two was Internet GRT and trying to get, and get it sorted out from regular GRT to increase transparency. Uh, and then the, um, LAPF tax cleanup and green amendment that may go to a House Bill 4, Bill of Rights, that creates some potential lawsuits. They want to clean the language up. And then Brian Moore from New Mexico Counties listed priorities out as, um, dealing with some unfunded mandates. Counties responsibility in the housing criminals with no help from the state and limited, unlimited from the communities, I said, yeah, sorry. Uh, the LFC budget is one of their priorities, as well as focus on mental health issues. Reach, um, an intervene support, uh, environment for homelessness and focus on making permanent increase in county participation in the, um, RISE partnership. And I failed to write down what RISE meant. R-I-S-E. Do you know?
I don't.
Yeah. So, um, like I said, the, the meeting did go on until about, it was virtual. It went on till about 2:00, but it was, like I said, quite glitched. It was quite on the low. And that's, that's all I have.
All righty, for myself, just starting to get back into the swing of things. And we did have a mayor's caucus meetings this afternoon via Zoom. Uh, we focused on the Internet sales taxes to make it more transparent so we can see exactly how my teach community get, is getting in there. We're focusing as well on the, the new bill to clean up the, the mess down in Carlsbad, Artesia, and all of that where they're not getting the credit for the money now that they used to get from the oil industry and they're losing money. So, trying to fix that without harming the rest of the state. And then again, we talked about the law enforcement bill and all of that. So that was pretty much it. Like Commissioner Chavez already said, we have a senior center board meeting February 12th, tentatively. So we'll go from there. And that's all I have.
Then we will be attending, the three of us will be attending the municipal day.
And the board meeting. All right, item six, items from citizens present. If there's anyone wishing to address the commission at this time with something other than what's on the agenda already, this is your moment. Is there anyone wishing to address the commission? Nobody. Seeing none, we'll move into the business section. Item 7A, deliberate and act on approval of minutes for special joint city commission and RPS meeting held on December 14th, '21, and the regular commission meeting held on January 11th, 2022. Have those minutes in your packet. Chance to go over them. Entertained motion.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes from the RPS joint meeting on December 14th. And the other meeting on January 11th, sorry.
It's all right. We have a motion and a second to adopt the minutes from both meetings, the special joint city commission and the regular commission meeting. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, deliberate and act on tower lease agreement between City of Raton and SpectraCom. Mr. Berry.
Mayor and Commissioner, this is a follow-up to our last meeting when you had a presentation from Brian Williams. He's the president of SpectraCom. Um, he is asking to, uh, assume the lease, basically negotiate a brand-new lease for the communications equipment and tower that's located on city property on the Old Pass Road. It has been operated for, uh, decades by CNC Communications, who, uh, now is getting out of the business and, and essentially SpectraCom will provide the same services. Uh, so you did have a chance to hear from Mr. Williams as far as, as, uh, how the property would be operated. The lease agreement that you have in your packet, um, is basically the same lease agreement that the City of Raton had with CNC Communications. There was a little bit of cleanup to this, but, uh, very close to the same agreement, um, with the same terms. So you see that it's a 10-year term. Basically, uh, SpectraCom will pay the city $600 a year, each year, for that 10-year term. It is renewable upon, uh, notification. Um, and I can try to answer any questions. You have the property, it's, it's existing equipment and tower located on about a five-and-a-half acre tract. Again, once again, on, uh, on the Old Pass Highway.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Berry this time?
I thought the lease looked good. I'll make a motion to approve the power lease agreement between the City of Raton and SpectraCom.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, deliberate and act on addendum to the liquor license lease agreement between City of Raton, Raton Country Club. Mr. Berry.
No, Mayor and Commissioner, generally, uh, the, uh, City of Raton has a governmental liquor license, uh, for operations at the, uh, City Convention Center. You recall before we did this, we tried to make arrangements for a private license to be, uh, to be transferred to the facility. And, uh, with the status of private, uh, alcohol licenses in Raton, that became impractical. So, uh, since we have obtained that governmental liquor license, uh, the City of Raton, uh, has maintained an agreement for the lease of that. Uh, it, it has been leased to Raton Country Club. They in fact operate, uh, operations at the country club, I mean, at the convention center, uh, when there is an alcohol use involved, such as a, a wedding reception. Our city clerk, Michael Ann Antinucci, uh, manages and administers this for, uh, the City of Raton. And, uh, I'm going to look over to her to give you the details of the addendum to the lease agreement.
Mayor and Commissioner, we've provided you with the original agreement. And then you'll see that, uh, in 2020 and again in 2021, we did do addendums to the lease to extend for another year. This would be extension number four, which would be the final extension under the original RFP and contract that we entered into with Raton Country Club. So, um, with the approval this evening, the current president is still Bernard Truchel. Uh, the resident agent is David Swanson. We do anticipate that sometime during this calendar year that there may be some changes. They generally hold their annual business meeting in March. And so if there's any changes to the board or that resident agent, then we would come back to the commission at a later date with a change of officer application. So with your approval this evening, in December, we did submit to renew our liquor license, which is currently good through the end of February. And so, um, that approval is currently on hold, pending providing them with a current lease agreement with the Raton Country Club for one more year. So, once we execute this, we'll send that off to alcoholic beverage control and we should receive another liquor, governmental liquor license, uh, for one more year that runs through February.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Michael Ann? Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the lease agreement. Is there any further discussion? I just have one. Um, Michael Ann, at the end of this term and the four years with the country club, do you then go off a bid for another agent or what, what's the process there?
Yeah, so I would anticipate next year, maybe like around November, we should start the process to request proposals again. Um, I think when we did this four years ago, we probably had two, uh, proposers. So there could potentially be another group out there that's interested. Uh, they have done a, a good job for the city. Uh, like the city manager said, you know, it gives us the ability for larger bookings. Um, I do know we have a cowboy ball coming up here in a few weeks. Um, so there'll be alcohol served at that event. But when we have weddings and conventions and, and things like that, you know, most people want to be able to offer, um, alcoholic beverages. So it's, it's been a good partnership and it's worked well for us. And I think it works well for the country club as well.
Cool. All right, just wanted to, to know what the process was. Any other discussions? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, deliberate and act on Resolution 2021-74, adopting travel policy relating to the reimbursement and travel for per diem and mileage expenses for public officers and employees of the city while on official city business. This was postponed from our last meeting, if you all recall. Mr. Berry.
Mayor and Commissioner, this, uh, resolution has been drafted by, uh, city clerk, again, Michael Ann Antinucci. Uh, generally to keep track with, uh, uh, changes that might occur at a statewide level and, and be equal with that. But, uh, once again, I'll, I'll call on the city clerk to give you the, the details or answer questions that she might have in regard to the current resolution and, and the current action proposed.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor and Commissioner, um, you will see the memo that I provided you a copy with from Department of Finance. Um, this was actually approved during the legislative session last year. Um, you'll see on the attached, uh, New, State of New Mexico per diem rates that as a result of the legislation, um, our current per diem rates, which had been in existence since 2003, were actually amended. So this is the first increase that we've seen since 2003. So you'll see that the in-state, uh, per diem rate was $85. And so the new rate will be 151. And then also the in-state, which is, uh, the special area of Santa Fe, that rate will increase from 135 to 194. And then the out-of-state rate goes from 115 to 151. So, um, we did have a training with Department of Finance back in November during the budget conference. And so they did offer a session to go over all of the changes. In addition, there's increases being made also to the meal rates for reimbursement of meals. And then also the partial day, uh, per diem rates were also increased as well. So we're bringing this new policy to you. Um, normally in the past, we've always adopted, um, maybe by reference of the statute 10-8-1 and then also, um, the New Mexico Administrative Code as well. And so we're actually putting this in a policy form. And then with regards to the mileage rates, that was changed back in 2009 to allow local public bodies to claim up to 100% of the IRS rate from the prior year. So you'll see in the enclosed policy that, uh, we would like to continue to amend that annually in compliance with the IRS prior year reimbursement rate. So, looking at the policy, it was pointed out to me that we had a couple typos. So we would like to correct on page five, paragraph three, there was the word per dime instead of per diem. So I will correct that. And then also on page seven, at the very bottom, it should say to the expenses. So I'll fix that as well. Um, there was one other change that I did want to make as we talk about the mileage. On page nine, you know, we do operate on a fiscal year, which is July 1st to June 30th. So you'll see under item B1, I had initially put that we would adjust the mileage rate July 1 of each fiscal year. But I think because the IRS sets these rates on a calendar year, I would like to change that language where it would be adjusted January 1 of each calendar year. So I apologize, I kind of needed to think about that. Um, and then by doing so, you know, we would never want to get ourselves in a situation because the IRS rate doesn't always go up. Sometimes it goes down. So I've seen it on the chart. It's fluctuated anywhere from 51 cents a mile up to 58 and a half cents. So, um, we certainly wouldn't want to get an audit finding if we're reimbursing employees a rate that exceeds that previous IRS rate. So with that, um, that's kind of just the, the basics of the policy. Um, it does go into a little bit more detail. We would like to have some training with employees and provide them with the policy as well. This is something that, uh, you know, the auditors every year pull samples and test work. And they look very closely to make sure that we're in compliance with this particular policy amongst many of our other policies as well.
All right, thank you, Michael Ann. Is there any questions or comments for Michael Ann?
I just have one question on the parking fees. I guess it's section nine. Um, it just says the parking fees are not considered reimbursement ever. Is that, is that how I'm, am I reading it wrong? I just wondered, because right now it seems like especially in Santa Fe, parking is no longer included or paid for on top, um, that everything. X numbers per day. So I didn't know if I was reading that wrong or, or if it's a valet that's not.
I think it's the, the valet, they're, they're referring more to valet or special type parking.
Okay.
So generally, if we have receipts, without a receipt, we could reimburse up to $6 per day without any receipts. And then of course, sometimes in Santa Fe and Albuquerque, depending on if you're in a parking garage or something, if it's going to be more than that, I would recommend turning in receipts.
Any other questions, comments? I would entertain a motion with the corrections as stated. Make a motion.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2021-74 with the pointed out corrections. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item E, deliberate and act on grant amendment number three between City of Raton and CYFD agreement number 21-690-3200-20841. Mr. Berry.
Mayor and Commissioner, it's pretty much all about the city clerk tonight. So, uh, I'm going to turn to the city clerk once again on this item.
Uh, Mayor and Commissioner, at the last meeting, uh, we did not have the final agreement from CYFD. So we just kind of discussed the draft that was in your packet. So we did put a contract in your packet. And then today, actually, CYFD sent us another amended agreement. So I've provided you with the final, uh, agreement from CYFD. Uh, they assured me this is the final. So, uh, when we look at, uh, the additional award, you'll recall that we had submitted a short-cycle funding application several months ago. This program was awarded an additional $54,228. Um, it will go towards the Girls Circle program, which HRDA is our subcontractor to provide those services. Um, in addition, a portion of the monies will increase the hours of our continuum coordinator as well. And then, um, this grant also has a 5% component for the city serving as the fiscal agent for the funding. So, um, that's the breakdown of the additional funds. So if we look at the contract, um, the language that they amended was pretty much that first section, items one through three are the purpose of the amendment. So what they're doing, we're only approving, uh, this fiscal year's increase with our subcontractor. But you'll see for FY '23 and '24, the contract amounts on page four at the bottom have been amended to also reflect, uh, that more than likely we will be approved for these additional funds for the next two fiscal years. So that's, uh, encouraging news, uh, for these programs. And then so that should eliminate the need to have to submit those supplemental applications during the fiscal year. But it will have to be re-approved annually. So, um, so that's kind of the gist of this amendment. And it is amendment number three. So with all of those revisions, our total contract through fiscal year FY '24 will see an increase of 162,684, which brings the total of the four years to 689,779. So our program in Raton, um, has actually performed quite well thanks to our continuum coordinator, Danielle Vanderpoel. Um, and then of course, the services provided by HRDA, they do an outstanding job as well. And so, um, I think us getting the additional funding is reflective of the quality services that our youth are receiving in Raton.
Absolutely. Any questions or comments for Michael Ann at this time?
This is the program.
It is.
I'll move to approve amendment, the subcontract between City of Raton and human. And on the wrong one.
No, you're there. You're there. We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement. Amendment number three for agreement number 21-690-3200-20841 with the CYFD. Is there any further comments? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, deliberate and act on amendment to subcontract between the City of Raton and Human Resource Development Associates. Mr. Berry.
Uh, Mayor and Commissioner, this subcontract is related to the CYFD grant funds that, uh, the city clerk had mentioned in the previous item. And it corresponds with that, uh, amendment to the term. Uh, once again, I will call on, uh, Michael Ann to give us the details. And are there any questions, Mr. Berry?
Uh, Mayor and Commissioner, uh, as a requirement of the grant with CYFD, uh, they do require that we make an amendment to the subcontract with HRDA to reflect, uh, the amount of the new contract for the Girls Circle and Boys Council services. Uh, we do also have a separate contract with HRDA who now also provides restorative justice services, which were previously provided by Immagreen. Um, but that is a separate contract that is not, uh, affected by any of these changes. So we bring this amendment to you, um, for approval and it will get submitted to CYFD along with the new amendment number three to the contract. Is there any questions? Is there any questions?
I take motion to approve the amendment to the subcontract between the city and Human Resource Development Associates, Inc.
We have a motion and a second to approve the amendment. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, deliberate an act on Resolution 2022-4, approval of the second quarter financial report. Michael Ann.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet is our second quarter financial report for FY '22. You'll see on our financial summary that as of December 31st, our available cash in the general fund was $1,763.87. Also, we had a very good month for grocery seat stacks, and we do believe that because this reflects the November business activity, that hopefully this is a good indicator of the pre-Christmas online sales. So I am optimistic that our December check that we'll receive next month should be pretty high as well. So I think that check probably still had a little bit of construction in it as well, but I think most of the construction was kind of coming to an end in November for the winter shutdown. Other than that, I did make mention that we did receive our first installment payment from our PS, and that's on the power contract buyout. And so they will make payments to us in semi-annual installments with the final loan payment to be due June 2025. So we did see that in the month of December. Also, we do anticipate receipt of our Small Cities Assistance Grant, which generally would be received after the legislative session ends. Because this is a 30-day session, we would hope to see that check possibly sometime in February. And then also the first half of the property taxes, we had mentioned before that the county had an extension of one month, so those will be received. Actually, we received one of the distributions this week, so we'll probably get another distribution next month, and then the second half taxes would be due in May. So with that, general fund grocery seats, that puts us at about 10.13% above the general fund budget projection year-to-date.
Very good.
So we'll continue to monitor that. I think as you mentioned, that's come up in some of your committee discussions as a concern, that it's difficult with the current reporting to really carve out what's online sales and what's not. So I would hope to see something occur during this legislative session that'll make those reports easier to do a comparison.
Yeah, I think we will. It's pretty high on the list with some of the communities.
Also, the loan closing for the Semirone Pump Station System upgrades will be on Friday, so that loan will close, and those funds will be available to Raton Water Works for completion of that project.
Cool. All right, any questions or comments for Michael Ann?
I have the motion with the Resolution 2022-4.
I'll second.
Have motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-04. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item H, deliberate an act on Resolution 2022-5, declaring surplus property and authorizing it to be donated to another public agency. Mr. Berry.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, in the resolution, you see a list of items that have been in the Raton Fire and Emergency Services Department. They have updated their inventory, and generally you see rescue tools are listed here, and these are older tools that no longer meet the current standards for the local fire department. However, they would be useful to another department, and our department recommends to you that these tools be donated to Trinidad Ambulance District. Also, you see some high-pressure hoses that are included here. You'll recall that we have generally been replacing hoses as we go, but I think this is related to the rescue equipment again. And one of the advantages to the funding formula, we'll talk about this and under the next item, is that we do fairly well with fire funds. And so these items are, we are able to replace those with fire funds. We don't have any debt on the fire funds currently. We'll talk about that under the next item, but this allows us to help another department while we're up to date on our current equipment needs. Also, this has been put together with the help of the city clerk, so you would have maybe some comments or additional information on this or be able to answer your questions, but we would recommend your approval in being able to use these rescue tools, these tools in this manner.
I'd like to ask you, any questions or comments for Mr. Berry or Michael Ann?
Mayor and Commissioner, I just wanted to mention that upon your approval this evening, it is contingent upon me submitting to the Department of Finance for their approval because it is a donation to another governmental entity, and we have indicated that Trinidad Ambulance is a governmental subdivision of the State of Colorado. And that was taken from the bylaws that were provided to me by the fire chief. So it will be sent to our financial analyst, and then once proper approval is received from them, then we would make arrangements to transfer that to the Trinidad Ambulance.
All righty.
I'll move to approve Resolution 2022-5 and allowing Michael Ann to proceed with the proper approvals.
A motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-5. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item I, deliberate an act on Resolution 2022-6, authorizing and approving submission of a completed application for financial assistance and project approval to NMFA for fire equipment. Mr. Berry.
Mayor and Commissioner, the Raton Fire and Emergency Services Department recommends this equipment upgrade to, for your consideration. The proposal generally consists of the purchase of a Type 1 engine. We would finance this piece of equipment, and you see the price, $736,012, with a loan from New Mexico Finance Authority, and we would service that debt with future distributions from the fire fund that we've mentioned previously. In addition, you'll recall that in the '21 regular legislative session, we did receive capital outlay for purchase of a ladder truck, $1.1 million. However, that's still not enough to buy the ladder truck that's needed by Raton. We would finance an additional $167,943 for the purchase of the ladder truck. So essentially, we would be purchasing a portion of both pieces of equipment with this loan, again, funded with future distributions of fire funds.
All righty, any questions or comments for Mr. Berry?
I'll take a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-6, the submission of the completed application for financial assistance and project approval to NMFA for the fire equipment.
I'll second. Have motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-6.
Mayor and Commissioner, if I could please, just one other comment. In discussing this with the fire chief, Burke, we did want to point out that we did have a carryover in our fire protection fund of a little over $410,000. So we do have some funds available, and so what I explained to him was, a lot of times with these NMFA loans, the amount of the loan is reduced to create a reserve, which is equal to one annual payment. So it is possible that we would use some of our fire funds to fund that reserve ourselves rather than reduce the loan amount for that. So those are some things that details, once the application is approved by NMFA, we would work with them, and potentially there could be some additional fire protection funds available. So this would be probably the maximum loan amount that we would be discussing. It could potentially come in a little bit less than that.
Always better.
And you do see a total amount of $903,955, and you see that the financing term proposes 10 years.
Yeah, and we've received letters also from the state fire marshal's office, so those were included in your packet as well to show that they concur with us using fire funds to finance this equipment.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Hey, we have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 2022-6. Some of, we already got it, I'm just, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Sorry, we're on that three off there. Item J, city manager report. Mr. Berry.
Mayor and Commissioner, I did attend the governor's local infrastructure conference some time back. In that conference, the governor did address some of her priorities for the session, capital outlay, but also federal infrastructure dollars that are coming forward to New Mexico. As the mayor pro tem had mentioned, some of those priorities are again, wastewater dams, broadband generally, and other forms of infrastructure, but those are specifically a few that she highlighted. The federal delegation did address local governments that attended. Most local governments were on this Zoom conference, and so we did hear from the federal delegation. We heard from members of the governor's staff, her cabinet, and in regard to specific funding or financing programs that were offered through various departments. It was an all-day conference, so there was a lot of information distributed, really a good source of information for us in looking at ways that we can finance a lot of different infrastructure, and we got into some of the other projects, maybe some non-infrastructure discussion as well at that. So that was a valuable conference. I know the mayor participated in that as well, and the mayor pro tem also. That gives us, you know, some help. We have had some discussion with the administration as well as our state delegation, and we have reflected that in capital outlay, but we would anticipate that in '21, there will be funding outside of capital outlay that would also be something that we talk about for infrastructure as we go through the year. That would be related to the federal infrastructure funding that we've been talking about. I did attend a webinar today, and I've got the notes here. That was an EPA REC webinar. It's called Accelerating the Recovery of Communities That Rely on Travel, Tourism, and the Outdoor Recreation Sectors. We specifically talked about some federal funding that applies to outdoor recreation sectors, and we heard from staff at US EDA about their funding opportunities. A lot of these funding opportunities are technical assistance, and as Commissioner Chatterley had discussed in her report, we do currently have an application for technical assistance through a federal program that we're awaiting word on, and that's related to our outdoor recreation sector. So we're optimistic about getting some assistance on that. There will be a Northeast Regional Transportation Planning Organization meeting, that will be tomorrow, starting at 10 o'clock. I will try to participate in that. Our public works director is the designate for the City of Raton, and he participates in that. That's been a valuable process for understanding and getting information on the Department of Transportation funding, so I would anticipate we'll get information on the local government road fund process that is about to come out. So in February, we'll be talking about applications for local government road funds as we do annually at this time of year. The City of Raton has been working with Better City in regard to a grant application to the U.S. Economic Development Administration related to our Kearney Film Production Project. That would consist of building, renovation, and equipment. We generally formatted a request of $3 million for federal participation in the project, and we'll be sending that off to EDA by the end of the week. As we talked about at our last meeting, we also have submitted a request for $2.5 million through the capital outlay system, and we've talked about that with our delegation and with the administration. So we're optimistic about funding in both directions. We have some work ongoing at the Aquatic Center. That's phase two of our improvement project at the Aquatic Center that we've talked about for some time. That includes improvements to our domestic plumbing system, shower rooms, and then some HVAC equipment, so that's ongoing. Myself and the city clerk are working on requests for proposals or requests for bids related to airport engineering contract and professional services, our electrical improvements at the Raton Readiness Facility that's located at the municipal airport, and our annual concrete infrastructure contract. So we'll bring those back to you in the future for your consideration, but we have that out right now. As you had mentioned previously, Municipal Day at the legislature is scheduled for February 3rd and February 4th. I believe staff has worked with a lot of the commissioners as far as getting registered for that. I'm not sure of the rules of attending the legislature, we'll find that out, but the municipal league portion of this will be held at the La Fonda Hotel. And then the municipal league provides their legislative report. I have distributed that to commissioners, trying to track some of the legislation that's important from a municipal standpoint, and bills that they follow and they testify on, and we're getting into some action at the legislature on that right now. I did talk to our state delegation on some of our priorities on capital outlay, and it's a 30-day session. We're well into it right now, so it's going to move pretty quickly, and we'll talk about that at legislative, at the municipal day at the legislature, and then at our next meeting as well. That's all I have, Mayor.
In regards to Municipal Day, AJ did say today that we're still planning to go ahead with a live meeting. In fact, Elder La Fonda and now the jury are both sold out, so we're getting good response. And as far as getting into the capital, you must present either a vaccine card or a proof of test, negative test, to get in the door, or you won't get in. All right. So any other comments before we end this?
I thought I might make one clarification for people who may be waiting for the flatter information that went out, and just clarify that that was regarding the city council meeting, that that was not put out by the city. But that we are, the city is working on economic development projects, that multiple projects that have to do with workforce development and job creation.
Yep.
Yep.
Very well said. Commissioner Jacomo?
What's up, Mr.?
Mr. Chavez?
Yeah, I got a phone call from Senator Pete Campos, because I had called him out on anything other than to see how his surgery went, and he called back and he said, from that meeting we had at the thing, and he said, I definitely, I definitely am going to be working on some stuff to help out at Raton.
Cool.
So I just let you know that maybe.
As you all know, that Senator Campos did have surgery around Christmas time, and we're just kind of checking, but he tells us that he's back to work and he's doing pretty well.
Good, good. Mayor pro tem?
I have nothing else, Dad.
I have nothing else either. This meeting is hereby adjourned. I hear kids screaming out there.